Okay, could everyone take your seats, please?
All right, she's okay. Yeah, it's not loaded. We just have to like, craze you. What a shame. Absolutely.
Okay, let's see, we call this meeting to order. And would everyone please rise for the invocation? And Reverend Paul Fonstock, Pastor, would you please come forward for the invocation?
I want to thank you, Mayor Ben, for the privilege it is to come and pray for you and the City Council and our city. You pray with me. Lord God, we thank you that in this day, we experienced another beautiful day in southwest Florida. We are so blessed. We thank you for our community. We thank you for the men and women who have given of their time here in our City Council, our mayor, our Senate councilman, giving you their time and their resources to make sure that our city is healthy and is growing. Lord, I pray that you'd give them wisdom, guide them, and direct them. I thank you for the health of our city. We thank you for the signs of healing and the signs of our economy returning. We thank you for our businesses thriving, and we pray that that will continue. So, we just want to honor you, Lord, for watching over us, giving us wisdom, and guiding and directing this great city of Bonita Springs. I pray all of this in the name of my Savior and Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Would everyone please join me in bled allegiance to the flag of our country?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Here.
Councilman Lockhart?
Here.
Councilman McIntosh?
Here.
Councilwoman Martin?
Here.
Councilman Slakta?
Mayor Nelson?
Here.
Councilman Simmons?
Here.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Very cool. All right, Councilman Slakta, I hope he's doing well tonight, and I hope he's not watching this because he should be watching something way more interesting on TV than this, but he probably is watching. Hey, Steve? Anyway, then with that, we are to public comment on agenda items. Anyone wishing to speak to an agenda item, agenda items only, please come forward.
Hi, Ron Puer, Bonita Springs. Last meeting, there was an agenda item. Tonight, it's appearing as number 9D, having to do with portable water, delivery of it, and sewer extraction from new development. And several questions were posed that night. Jerry Masters was here, left you off with a, left off with you a sheet of paper that condensed two items in particular, and that was, or is having to do with the resource conservation system and the use of the wastewater in the city. And he'd made some recommendations there, and also asked the question, one taxpayer action group has been asking for years of the city when it comes to impact fees, and the Bonita Springs utility as well. And what we're wondering is, who pays and where is it defined in the ordinance that you folks are going to be considering tonight? Now, last meeting, Councilman Lockhart, I think, I heard him ask why some of this business that Jerry Masters had advanced to you couldn't be included in the ordinance. And I think the attorney said something or other about not being appropriate. Now, my memory tells me that, over the years, BSU has had contract or franchise renewals with the city, and soon after they're granted the franchise renewal, they come in and ask for additions, and which, in some eyes, should have been included in the franchise renewal agreement. So if additions or addendums and resolutions and ordinance could be made downstream, we think it's appropriate for you to consider that as being part of that being, who pays for this? We don't want to pay for it. The taxpayer, I think at large, would rather not pay for it. They'd rather have the developer pay for it. And that's it for now. There's another opportunity to address this, I guess. Will that be before or after you discuss it among yourselves as an item on the agenda? I can't remember.
There'll be public comment at that, during the agenda.
Would you be addressing it initially? The ordinance?
You mean, when will public comment be at that part?
Yes.
Before or after?
Yeah.
I'm not certain.
Okay. Well, hopefully it'll be after. Before your vote.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea. I agree, that'd be a good idea.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Anyone else this time, please come forward? Anyone? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move along to presentations and proclamations, and we have a few. No, no, we have, we actually have a lot. And here we go. Now, I gotta go back now. Let me set that light on this kid. Get it? God, Doc, this is a tough crowd. All right, and first of all, Dan, Dan Bogalski, could you come forward, please? And this is, this is a proclamation for National Small Business Week. How you doing, Dan? It's good to see you. Come on up here. How's business?
It's good, man.
I know, it's good. It's good, great. Whereas every year since 1963, the President of the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Week to recognize the contributions of small businesses to the economic well-being of America. And whereas Florida SBDC and FGCU recognizes May 12th through May 16th as the National Small Business Week, and celebrates the spirit of entrepreneurship in small business owners throughout southwest Florida. And whereas the city of Bonita Springs is pleased to work with and support the efforts of the FSBDC in Bonita Springs, and whereas the city of Bonita Springs recognizes the FSBDC provides no-cost, one-on-one confidential consulting, training, and support that promotes a healthy business environment, and provides the necessary tools for entrepreneurs to succeed in a global workforce. And whereas the FSBDC works alongside the business community to share their real-world experiences with small business owners in the city of Bonita Springs. And whereas the city of Bonita Springs recognizes the need for ongoing business assistance and thanks the outstanding contributions that the FSBDC has given entrepreneurs and small business owners here and all across the United States to succeed and grow in an ever-expanding global economy. Now, therefore, I, Ben Nelson, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 12th, 16th, 2014 shall be designated as Small Business, National Small Business Week in Bonita Springs. Dan, thank you for everything you do. Please, everyone, give him a hand.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the city for your ongoing support, Carl and Ben especially, in working with our small business communities. You know Rudy's a real advocate in this marketplace to help with our businesses. And for, to Christine in the Bonita Springs Chamber of Commerce, thank you for your continued support. I've said it for a long time, Bonita Springs is the heartbeat of southwest Florida and a beacon for not only a great place to live, but a great place to set up and grow business. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna give you another one for that. Wait. Thank you very much. Go ahead. And now, Christine Ross, could you please come forward, please? I'm checking this one for difficult acronyms like, I don't know. Nope, nope, this one's good. How you doing?
Good.
Good, how's business? I'm gonna keep saying that, see, Small Business Week, get it? It's a thing, anyway. Whereas the small business community within the city of Bonita Springs contributes to the economies of the development base of the economy, and whereas Bonita Springs' small business community enhances and contributes to the quality of life for our city and all its citizens. And whereas Bonita Springs' small business base is one of the keys to the growing future of the city. And whereas the achievements of our small businesses are indispensable to the development and preservation of Bonita Springs and to the Lee County's economic climate. And whereas the Bonita Springs Area Chamber of Commerce recognizes the importance of the small business in Bonita Springs, and offers during this week a variety of workshops based and focused on assisting small business owners to be successful. Now, therefore, I, Ben Nelson Jr., on behalf of the City Council of the city of Bonita Springs, do hereby proclaim the week of May 12th to 16th Small Business Week, and request that all citizens support our local businesses in Bonita Springs. Thank you, Christine, for what all of you in the chamber do. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. As, as you know, maybe you don't know. Ninety-three percent of the businesses that are members of the chamber are 10 or fewer employers, employees. So, we work really hard with the SBDC and with the banks and the universities, and Rudy was a great hire. I want him to spend more time in my office, please, because everybody loves Rudy. And we just want people to shop locally. So, thank you for this recognition, because we're all about building the community, and Bonita Springs rocks.
Thank you very much. You've been a great partner. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. Okay, now, Nicole Monahan. Are you here, Nicole? Come on up. You can bring your son too, if you want, if you want to go up too? No? Mr. Paparazzi? Stalker. Guys, stalker. No, he's not. You gotta be careful doing that. Hi, how you doing?
I'm good.
Good. And this is a proclamation, and let's see, well, that's right. This is great. Whereas public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support and understanding of an informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection, parks, and canal maintenance. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on the facilities and services. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the performance of the work that they do. Whereas this year's theme is Building for Today, Planning for Tomorrow. As we celebrate the hard work and dedication of the many public works professionals throughout the world, now, therefore, I, Ben Nelson Jr., on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through May 24th as National Public Works Week, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works, and to recognize the contribution which public works officials make in our everyday lives for our safety, health, comfort, and quality of life. Thank you so much for everything you do on behalf of the city of Bonita Springs. Take this there, there. Hey, everyone, give him a hand.
Thank you. On behalf of the 120 members that we have in APWA locally, and the 28,000 that we have nationally and internationally, thank you for taking the time to recognize not just public work officials, but also employees across the board, consultants that support those departments, everybody that's involved in public works benefits from this week. And thank you for taking the time to recognize us.
It's our pleasure. Thank you very much. Good, I think he's holding it back. Thank you very much. Everybody, please, give her another hand, please. And at this time, would George Clover, would you please come forward? Prince, the principal of Estero High School, of course. And Council McIntosh is gonna help us out here, he's a good friend of George. I should really, I should really let Steve handle this, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna read it off here first, and I'm gonna give the microphone to Steve for a minute here. George is retiring. He thinks, anyway, but I was, I think there's a lady out there who has other ideas for him, so. But anyway, would you like to come forward too? Would you like to come up?
Yes.
No, she says no. That's a no. Okay. And this is certificate of recognition and appreciation of this community for everything you've done. Estero High School, it's really been Bonita's school as well. I mean, we, we really love what you've done with it. We really love the kids there. Thank you so much for everything you've done. And to you, George Clover, on this retirement, as principal of Estero High School, for your dedication and years of service to the Lee County Schools District, thank you so much for everything you do. There you are. Suitable per framing at your expense, apparently. Here you go.
The school system doesn't come out of the purview of, of the city, but the accountability for public schools is part of our responsibility. We couldn't have the quality of the city we have, we couldn't have the quality of future leaders we have without the dedicated leaders like George Clover. He's been a partner in this, with the city. He's done things that are amazing with that school. If you go through that campus, it's clean, it's tidy, it's, it's quiet. The teaching is excellent. The, they have state champions in the athletic side. They have the Cambridge program, which is a rarity among any schools. We owe a debt of gratitude for the future leaders who'll be running this city. Thank you, George Clover.
Everyone, give him a hand.
I'd like to just say something that, five years ago, I would say this is not possible, but I'm looking into growth, and there's a lot of conversation, and I know there's a lot of people in Bonita that would love to have a high school with the big B on the front. And ladies and gentlemen, I think it's going to happen, not too, too far down the road the way the population's going. And I am retiring from Estero High School, but I'll be around to help you guys get one started. So, thank you very much.
You heard it here first. Thanks so much. Okay, and Phil, Phil Flood. Where you at? Come on up here. Somebody get this man a glass of water. It's good. Come on, come on. That was horrible, wasn't it? I know you're a beer drinker. Come on, quit it. I always gotta get Phil to loosen up here a little bit. You're so uptight. Stop it. Okay. Whereas safe, clean, and sustainable water resources are essential to Bonita, Bonita Springs, Florida's environment, economy, citizens, and visitors. And whereas Florida's water supplies are finite, while our population and our need for water resources continues to increase. And whereas water reuse provides a means for conserving and augmenting Florida's precious water resources. And whereas Florida has established the encouragement and promotion of water reuse as state objectives in chapters 373 and 403 Florida statutes. And whereas Florida's permitted reuse capacity exceeds 1.7 billion gallons per day, more than 67% of Florida's total permitted capacity for all domestic wastewater treatment facilities. And whereas Florida leads the nation in reusing 725 million gallons of reclaimed water each day to conserve freshwater supplies and recharge our freshwater resources. And whereas the state of Florida has declared the week of May 18th through 24th to be Water Reuse Week in Florida. And whereas the city of Bonita Springs has joined with the state of Florida, Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and the Southwest Florida Water Management District in encouraging and promoting water reuse and conservation. And whereas the city of Bonita Springs encourages efficient and effective use of reclaimed water. Now, therefore, I, Ben Nelson, on behalf of the city of Bonita Springs, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through 24th, 2014, as Water Reuse Week. Thank you very much, Phil, for all you've done. Please, give this great man a hand. Thank you for putting up for that.
No, thank you for just a couple of minutes here that you guys are spending to talk about reuse and how important it is that water is very important to this community. And, and it's not just about water conservation. If, if we did not have reuse out here through Bonita Springs' utility, this water would likely be going into one of our water bodies and contributing towards the degradation of our water, of our water quality. So, so this is not just about water conservation and water supply, it's also about water quality, something that's near and dear to this community. And I just want to applaud all y'all's efforts at, at trying to address water quality and water supply needs here.
Thank you very much, Phil. Thank you for all your hard work and your help, so, thank you. Okay, now we have a certificate of appreciation for Alex. Oh, no, we don't. Did I skip somebody?
Yes, you did.
I did. Nigel Fulick, would you come up here, please? Off script. Hey, now, sir? Ben Nelson?
Nigel Fulick, Dan, glad to meet you, sir. Well, usually, I'm gonna turn on and address council. We're always asking you guys for things, and it's complaints and that sort of thing. And we're really here today not only to honor the artist, but to say thank you to the council for your support in what we're presenting today. Because the mayor made it rain to celebrate Bonita, we could not do this presentation there onstage the way that we wanted to. But if you have not seen it, if you've driven Old 41, you will see our first mural from the city, for the city of Bonita Springs, which was created by Alejandro with a great deal of work. And the reason that, and I'm very proud of the fact that this evening, most of our Art in Public Places Board chose to come this evening because it's important for the city of Bonita Springs, and for us to say thank you to council for your support in allowing us to do this. So if I could ask my Art in Public Places Board members to come up, please. Trish Leonard, and Janet Flanders, and Joni La Citra, and Jackie Hauserman, these are your fellow citizens that give a lot of their time, and over the past few years, when there wasn't a lot of money, we made a lot of good things happen, and chamber, or council continues to support us.
Everybody get them a hand, please.
So what we'd like to do, first of all, is dedicate our first mural, and if, again, if you've not seen it, Old 41, Benson's Grocery, looks much better than it used to. With all due respect to Al and the family, it looks a lot better now. The best part of this was, we contracted for a mural that was taking place, or was part of three sections of the building. Much to our surprise, and without any asking on our part, Alex decided that he wanted to take it one step further. And he took the mural down the entire side of the building, spent his time, his money, his effort, and we're so deeply grateful for that. So I know we're gonna do honor you in a second, Alex, but publicly, we wanted to say thank you as a board and as a city for going that extra mile as a true citizen of Bonita. So, on behalf of the Art in Public Places Board, this certificate of dedication, the Art in Public Places Board does hereby dedicate the first inaugural mural of the Art in the Sun Along Old 41 Program titled Mi Pueblo Bonito, and if you don't know, that it means "my beautiful town." And it's presented to the mayor, I believe that's Ben Nelson, and our honorable city council, as well as the citizens of Bonita Springs, to enjoy this 7th day of May 2014. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you so much. And did you want to say something about the, the piece that's over here?
Alex, can we ask you to come up, please? Why don't you, I know we've got a TV camera in here somewhere, so. This is.
Want to introduce the artist first?
This Alejandro Nunez fellow, our artist, known to everybody as Alex. And I know his family's here, and I know you're very proud of him. But this is actually a copy of the mural, an exact replication. And I know Alex put a few little extra things on the wall, but this is an original. I don't know what this is worth, but if we had an auction, it in itself would be worth some money. He did this on his own. He paid to have it framed on his own. So again, this is a true citizen and one of our own artists that created this, and I think this is really, really special. So, Alex, thank you very much.
Well, I just wanna pay, thank you and the city of Bonita Springs to give me the opportunity to do something great for the community, and also the opportunity to work with such a great people.
Yes, and Janet, thank you for being the liaison for the, for the Arts in Public Places.
My pleasure.
And thank you, all of you, for everything you do. You're making our town even more beautiful, and thank you so much. Everybody, give him a hand again.
Wait, wait just a second. Wait.
Next to me, McIntosh. Boy, I look bigger than you.
Yeah, it's not level. Yeah, I get that.
Is there a shine coming on?
Trish, Trish, come on. Chill your face.
Very nice, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, and Alex, are you still here? Oh, Alex Nunez. Come on over here. Have something else. This just pales in comparison to what you just gave us. So, I, I drew it myself, though. Put it on your, put it on your refrigerator. No? Alex, this is a certificate of appreciation, our most sincere appreciation for what you've done there, and in recognition of the remarkable dedication and efforts beyond expectation to the inaugural mural of Art in the Sun Along Old 41 Project, thank you again so much for what you did. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good, and your art will live on. I'm gonna have a heck of a scrapbook before this is all over. This is great. Okay. Oh, this is great. Karine Kleinberger? Come on forward. Come on over here. Hello? This is a certificate of recognition. As You Like It Salon is, was called, was named Salon in Salon 200 to be, let's see, let's see, in the category of planned profitability. Named to the Salon Today 200, one of the 200 best, right, in the country. Very nice. Very nice. Congratulations. As You Like It Salon, in honor of being named in Salon Today 200 by Salon Today Magazine in the category of planned profitability. Thank you so much for making Bonita Springs, so many things happen in Bonita Springs, putting us on a map, and this lady's helping us out as well. Give her another hand, please.
Thank you very much. On behalf of As You Like It Salon, it's a wonderful thing to be embraced by your city, and we're always trying to think of ways that we can hug you back. So when you're wondering about fundraising, or projects, or volunteering, or participation, we just want to be more simpatico with the city of Bonita Springs, so, thank you very much.
Karine, where is Salon?
As You Like It.
Where is it?
Well, I'm so glad you asked that. It's on the corner of West Terry and 41, right here in Bonita Springs. You may.
Does that be Old 41?
No, it's New 41 and West Terry in Bonita Bay Plaza. You may know where Rural King is right now, so. We're right there.
All right, well, everybody remember that, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, and at this time, would Sarah Clark, Robin Tucker, Scott Schnappoff, would you please come forward? That's our bicycle committee, right?
Yes, it is.
No bikes?
Bicycle.
Well, fine, I was expressing bicycles, but that's okay. Oh, well, that, well, thank you for that as well. It's good to see you.
Hi.
Hi. Hello. Hello. Okay, and this is a proclamation, whereas for more than a century, the bicycle has been an important part of the lives of most Americans, and whereas today, millions of Americans engage in bicycling as an environmentally sound form of transportation, an excellent form of fitness, and provides quality family recreation. And whereas the education of cyclists and motorists as to the proper and safe operation of bicycles is important to ensure the safety and comfort of all users. And whereas the League of American Bicyclists and Independent Cyclists throughout our state are promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities. And whereas many residents in the city of Bonita Springs are bicycle enthusiasts, now, therefore, I, Ben Nelson Jr., on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of the city of Bonita Springs, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through 24th as Small Business of Bonita Springs, do hereby proclaim May 2014 as National Bicycle Month. Thank you for all you do to help to keep our bicyclists safe and to make our community have a better quality of life. Thank you so much. Everyone, thank you. Thank you very much. Do you want to say something?
Yeah, sure. On behalf of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Committee of Bonita Springs, we'd like to thank you for the proclamation, and also, we want to thank the city for its efforts to encourage outdoor physical activity like bicycling by working to create a safe place in which to live, work, and play.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. And this is a proclamation for the Make-A-Wish Foundation. Thomas Fasiglia and Taylor Marini, come on forward. One of you doesn't look like a Thomas, so I may have gotten that wrong.
Hi.
Nico, oh, you're Meg, hello. And, and, oh, Jenny Cook, how you doing? I should get a pause for the last proclamation of the night. No, that's okay. Whereas since 1983, Make-A-Wish of Southern Florida has granted the wishes of children with life-threatening medical conditions to enrich the human experience with hope, strength, and joy. And whereas a wish come true for a child with a life-threatening medical condition provides a special kind of magic, creating an indomitable spirit within the child to help sustain him or her through difficult and extremely difficult times. And whereas the nonprofit organization grants the wish of any child who is between the age of two and a half to 18 and diagnosed by a physician as having a life-threatening medical condition. And whereas the organization serves children and families in Southwest Florida, granting more than 1,100 wishes since its inception. And this past fiscal year alone, 44 incredible wishes were granted to children in Lee County, providing much-needed respite from doctors and hospitals. And whereas the local chapter recently granted the wish of a 10-year-old, is that, you'll see, Jose, from Bonita Springs, who traveled with her family to Central Florida for a seven-day, six-night vacation to Walt Disney World. And whereas the Bonita Springs City Council and mayor's office are pleased to offer a special tribute to the Make-A-Wish for their efforts on behalf of our community and merit the recognition and gratitude of our citizens. So now therefore I, Ben Nelson, on behalf of the city council, and by virtue of authority invested in me as mayor of the city of Bonita Springs, do hereby proclaim May 7, 2014, as Make-A-Wish Day. Thank you so much for everything you do, and anybody that sees the pictures, or anybody who has any experience with this knows how important it is and how it touches your heart. Thank you, you are angels. Thank you so much. Everyone, please. Thank you.
I just want to thank everyone for allowing us to come out today and to raise awareness about our foundation in the Bonita Springs area. Like you said, we have granted over 1,000 wishes in this area, and we are celebrating Make-A-Wish Month during the month of May, so trying to raise awareness as much as possible. So thank you for all of your help with that.
Thank you so much. Again, please give them a hand. Wonderful work. That was like a world record for presentations and proclamations. That last one was hard to do. So, yeah, thank you. Okay, consent agenda, council. Is there anything on the consent agenda that you'd like to take off there? We have three on there, A, B, and C.
I'll move to approve.
We have motion to approve, and we have a second. Is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Okay, and at this time, we have first reading and public hearing on the following ordinances, and on these ordinances, public comment is allowed. Audrey, what do you have with us?
Thank you. The first is an ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Lee County, Florida, extending the territorial limits of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida by the annexation of unincorporated tracts of land owned by Pelican Landing Golf Resorts Ventures LP lying contiguous to and being in the same county as the city of Bonita Springs, Lee County, Florida, located in Sections 5, 6, 7, and 8, Township 47 South, Range 25 East, approximately 55.16 more or less acres, assignment to City Council District 1, and providing for an effective date. This is the first reading of the ordinance. The second reading of the ordinance will be on May 21, 2014, beginning at 9:30 in these chambers, 9 o'clock in these chambers.
Okay. Counsel, are there any questions or comments or have public comment? Okay, at this time, anyone, a member of the public wishes to speak on this matter, this particular matter at this time, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Would you like to send us to second?
Move to second read.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Okay, carry on, Audrey.
The next is an ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Lee County, Florida, extending the territorial limits of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida by the annexation of unincorporated tracts of land owned by Walden Center LP and WCI Communities LLC lying contiguous to and being in the same county as the city of Bonita Springs, Lee County, Florida, located in Section 9, Township 47 South, Range 25 East, 8.91 more or less acres, assignment to City Council District 1, and providing for an effective date. This is the first reading of the ordinance. The second reading will be on May 21, 2014, beginning at 9:00 a.m. in these chambers. I've reviewed the affidavit of publication, and it is legally sufficient.
Okay, and counsel, I'm gonna go ahead and open a public comment this time. Any member of the public wishing to speak on this matter, in this matter alone, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Counsel, what's your pleasure on this?
Move to second reading.
We'll move to second reading. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second.
That's fine.
It's right here. Roll call.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Okay, Audrey.
Thank you. This is an ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Lee County, Florida, extending the territorial limits of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida by the annexation of unincorporated tracts of land owned by James A. Hollers and Reiner B. and Lisa Newman on Messina Court lying contiguous to and being in the same county as the city of Bonita Springs, Lee County, Florida, located in Sections 8 and 17, Township 47 South, Range 25 East, assignment to City Council District 1, and providing for an effective date. This is the first reading. The second reading will be on May 21 at 9:00 a.m. in these chambers. I've reviewed the affidavit of publication. It is legally sufficient. I also have had the pleasure to let you know that Mr. Hollers is in the audience today, and I was able to introduce him to Mr. McIntosh.
Okay, good. At this time, we'll open public comment, and anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward. Seeing none, counsel, you what's your pleasure?
Move to second reading.
Move to second reading. Is there a second? Motion to second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Okay, one more time, Audrey.
Thank you. This is first reading of the following ordinance, an ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Lee County, Florida, extending the territorial limits of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida by the annexation of unincorporated tracts of land owned by H. Dennis and Lori Ann Hill on Tuscany Way, lying contiguous to and being in the same county as the city of Bonita Springs, Lee County, Florida, located in Section 8, Township 47 South, Range 25 East, assignment to City Council District 1, providing for an effective date. This is the first reading. The second reading will be scheduled for May 21, 2014, beginning at 9:00 a.m. in these chambers. I've reviewed the affidavit of publication, and it is legally sufficient.
Okay, and at this time, we'll open the public comment, and anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. And counsel, what is your pleasure on this?
Move to second reading, please.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye. Okay, and that does it for first readings, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, and now we're on item number nine. It's second reading and public hearings of these following ordinances. Go ahead with number A, please. Or letter A.
I'll go a little slower this time. This is an ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Lee County, Florida, extending the territorial limits of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida by the annexation of unincorporated tracts of land owned by Astero Bay Marine LLC, Donovan LLC, and Sugar Mountain LLC for Phase 1, also known as the Astero Marina Area, lying contiguous to and being in the same county as the city of Bonita Springs, Lee County, Florida, located in Section 7, Township 47 South, Range 25 East, approximately 17.34 more or less acres, assignment to City Council District 1, and providing for an effective date. I've reviewed the affidavit of publication, and it is legally sufficient. The ordinance is a voluntary annexation, where we do have an annexation agreement, and we have treated the annexation agreement as the petition for the annexation. John Dolmer is here, if you have any questions as to the land. We do have an annexation agreement, and the services do deal with the comprehensive plan changes and the zoning provisions. There's no additional services being requested, in other words, like utility lines that the city would be held accountable for. If you have any questions, I do know that the owners are in the audience, if you have, or representatives are in the audience, if you do have questions on this particular matter, or John Dolmer, if you have questions.
Okay, counsel, do you have any questions before we go to public comment? Okay, all right, we'll open public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward. Hey, come on up. Hello.
Hello, gentlemen.
You go ahead and pull that microphone down, it's a little, there you go.
Certainly.
And please talk until, we want to hear what you have to say.
I just want to say that I hope, when you're giving all this stuff to these people, you keep into consideration, we who live down there, and, Lord, I was born and raised there, I'm a Weeks, and I still live there, and the discomfort and that it can cause us on a daily basis, some of this stuff that's going on. We would like you to consider the fact that it may be a little much. There's quite a few, quite a few property owners still down there. So I just wanted to say that. We are there, even though there's been pieces in the paper and stuff suggesting that we're not, we are there. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention, because I know the attorney for the city of Bonita was under the impression that more land was owned by these people than is. And that's what I wanted to say to you guys.
Well, thank you very much. And what was your name for the record?
Daisy Weeks Banks.
Daisy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming to the microphone. Anyone else this time, come on forward.
Hi, ladies and gentlemen.
How you doing?
My name is Bob Garcia, and I'm a resident at 5216 Drain Street, which is about the center of Weeks Fish Camp. I've owned the property for approximately 23 years, and we've seen a lot of positive changes in the community, and I just want everybody to understand that, we understand that the annexation is more or less the first step towards the city of Bonita being able to make decisions on the property that's directly adjacent to my property and directly adjacent to Daisy Weeks's property that she was just up here on speaking about. And I just wanted to kind of speak a little of my piece about the, as the process goes forward, and we realize that it is improvements to the city and potential income to the city by this whole process, we'd just like to be, make it known that we're, you know, we're willing to work with the developer and with the city, but at the same point, there are considerations that we hope that will be, that will be made, that there are, you know, there's residences at the, at the area still, so if permission is granted for permitting and such, that those things are taken into consideration, and, you know, the noise factor, and a lot of the things that just come along with construction, that, that we, we just kind of hope that all of the, it has a great history in that area, and that the decisions that are made moving forward kind of take that into account. Thank you.
Good deal. Thank you very much for coming forward. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Evening, James Ank. I am the lead representative for entitlements for the owner in this development, and just want to state on the record that we, like I, have been here for a long time, and we are very, we recognize the, the ownership of the neighbors and the city, and look forward to working with staff and the guidance from city council on creating a project we can all be proud of.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Seeing none, counsel, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Okay, item B, please.
Thank you. This is an ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Lee County, Florida, extending the territorial limits of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida by the annexation of unincorporated tracts of land owned by Hyatt Equities LLC, lying contiguous to and being in the same county as the city of Bonita Springs, Lee County, Florida, located in Section 7, Township 47 South, Range 25 East, 26.5 more or less acres, assignment to City Council District 1, and providing for an effective date. This is the second reading of the ordinance. I've reviewed the affidavit of publication. It is legally sufficient. John Dolmer is here, if you have any questions as to how the property is compact and contiguous to the city of Bonita Springs. And without further ado, I'll let you proceed.
Okay. Counsel, if there's no rejection, I'll go to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak at this time to this particular item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Counsel, what is your pleasure on this one?
Move to approve, please.
Move to approve.
Second.
Is there a second? And there's a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Welcome, Hyatt Coconut Point, to the city of Bonita Springs. Okay, what have we got next?
Okay. And next is the second reading of the following ordinance. This is an ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, amending Bonita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter 3, Development Standards, amending Section 3-262, regulating security lighting within public and private right-of-ways, amending 3-608 Site Design Standards, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scriven reserves, inclusion code, and effective date. This is the second reading, as well as the public, as well as the land use ordinance, so it does require a public hearing at this time. I've reviewed the affidavit of publication. It is legally sufficient. The green sheet explains the changes that have been made to the ordinance over the times, as well as the purpose, or a summary of the draft ordinance. If you have questions, I'll be happy to answer, or Mr. Dolmer.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions about this? Did we have any loose ends that we were, things that you were supposed to accomplish last time? Chris, did we have anything added last time or? No changes?
Not since the last meeting, no, sir.
Okay.
It was the, the first reading, it was changing the date, actually, permission advertised, it was changing the date to 2020.
Yeah, that was, that was permission advertised.
We did meet with the LPA and we did make some changes, I believe, to the ordinance during the LPA meeting. The LPA did express concerns, not so much to the proposed changes, but to photometrics in general.
Okay. Those photometric things, yeah, okay.
Light meter and how you hold it.
All right, counsel, do you have any questions or concerns before we go to public comment? Anything for Chris? Anything? Chris, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
And thank you for all your help this whole last couple of weeks. We've been conversing quite a bit through emails, I'm sure all of you have on several items. Public comment, anyone wishing to speak on this ordinance, this proposed ordinance at this time, please come forward. This is the lighting standard ordinance. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay, well done. And item D.
Thank you, I know hurry up, I've tried to write. Okay, this is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, amending the city of Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan as adopted by ordinance number 02-16 as amended so as to update the potable water sub element of the infrastructure element and the capital improvements element to coordinate with the South Florida Water Management District's Lower West Coast Water Supply 2012 Plan Update and including a ten-year water supply facilities work plan as required by Florida Statute, Section 163.3177, subsection 6C, providing for transmittal to the State Land Planning Agency and providing conflicts clause, severability clause, and providing for an effective date and for other purposes. This is the second reading, it will be, if city council approves, it will be transmitted to the Department of Economic Opportunity. I believe you've heard all the comments as to changes to this document. This is part of your comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan is setting up your goals, your objectives, your policies to assure that you have adequate, in this particular case, water supply, but sometimes it's transportation, sometimes it's libraries. This is just amending the portion dealing with water supply. It is a mandate from the state of Florida that we do this update. I believe it's eighteen months upon the Water Management District completing their approval of their update. So it is something that is required by the state. It is something where we try to keep it simple. There are different technical changes. I will not, I'll be happy to have staff explain the technical changes to you. You do have the document. The LPA did delete one of the policies and that policy was based on the fact that it suggested that we also work with Lee County and it was something where they did not feel it was necessary to have that coordination anymore. And that's shown through cross hatches. It is a concurrency requirement, it is not something where you can go in and utilize as a franchise change.
So just, just to get it straight here, this is a broad brush, like all comprehensive plan amendments, all things, then the comprehensive amendment, it's very broad vesh, very general goals and objectives, that type of thing, right?
That's.
And so when, when this, this, going forward with this particular amendment doesn't mean that the suggestions that were made in regard to Benita Springs Utilities, whatever, it doesn't mean that they're not right or they're wrong or anything like that. It means this isn't the, the proper mechanism to implement those kinds of changes, correct?
I don't think so. I mean, if you wish to put something for reclaimed water as an objective or a goal, you can do so, but understand that in whatever you do, it does not impair contractual rights, it does not change contractual rights, and remember, you know, Benita Springs.
Even when we set goals and objectives for ourselves.
Right.
Sometimes we don't fulfill them.
Yeah, we try to follow our own goals, but I mean, it is something that, you know, it is a separate entity that we work with to assist us with that. And remember, we are not alone with it being Benita Springs Utilities, it's also other water providers, of which we are blessed that there's not as many as there was when we first incorporated. Since this last update, Glade Haven is gone.
But the main goal here is to comply with the Florida statute by, by making the changes that we have. That's the reason it's before us. Okay, counsel, do you have any questions before we go to, or questions or comments? Yes, go ahead, Mike.
If this isn't the spot where we can ask them to look at impact fees to cover the future expansion for future growth, when would be or how would we go about that?
Now, are you talking about having an impact fee for reclaimed water on new development?
Not for the reclaimed water, for, it talks about future growth, extra brackish water wells, you know, another more reverse osmosis plants to handle future growth of a more housing.
I'll make a suggestion, Mike. I think it'd be a good idea to, to cause Benita Springs Utility to come before us and go ahead and, and be prepared. We'll develop a list of those questions that we would like them to answer and have them come forward and do a presentation and tell us what their plan is, show us the numbers and show us, okay, this is, these are the numbers that we have, this is how it covers the expenses and the questions that you're asking. I think, I think they should come before us and make that explanation, if you want to.
Let me talk fees for one second, if that's okay. As to, I mean, you mentioned impact fees and impact fees, normally, impact fees is what the city charges to new development to pay for the new development's growth and its impact, and it has to pass what's called a dual rational nexus test. And we normally do it for our services, we do it for some limited services outside, we do it for the fire district, a governmental entity, and we do it for EMS, a governmental entity. Benita Springs Utilities is not a governmental entity, so it is not something that impact fees is appropriate. Now, we could do aid to new construction and they do have aid to new construction, it is put in there to, you know, so that there is new growth, there's like a surcharge. When you buy into the system, you pay that surcharge, very comparable to an impact. If I was building a house, I would think it was an impact fee, but it's not an impact fee, it's, it's set up as a separate structure.
Yeah, like a three-letter.
You knew that, you just called it something.
Yeah, I couldn't remember what the, you know.
Right. And, and that would be, the time to do that is during the tariff discussions. Now, I did have.
Or anytime before then, we can ask them to come forward.
Always, always.
Yeah, okay. Mike, do you, do you want to go ahead and have Carl arrange for them to, to give a presentation about those things so we can, because we can sit here and talk to ourselves all day about those things, we actually need them here, right?
Exactly.
All right, well, would you, would you like Carl? Carl, can you have them?
Absolutely.
All right, if you would.
You looking for the next meeting, 21st, perhaps?
Whenever, however long it takes them to get that information together, but you've got the list of questions there and if any of you have specific questions that you'd like have answered, please give them to Carl and, and that way they can address them and we can go ahead and figure out if there's something they can do. That be okay?
Yep, we'll arrange it.
All right. Let's go to public comment at this time. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like, you know, I'd like to get back to the last meeting and what was attempted at that one and that was, we, we wanted the discussion to start real early on this because it's real late to begin this discussion in our view with so much at, at risk of losing. I think many of the people are more familiar with the term impact fees than they are ANC fees. Basically, they're kind of the same thing. And by the same thing is either we pay for the road because the impact fee has been reduced drastically or eliminated, or the developer pays for the road in its entirety. Hopefully someday the council will take that route and increase the fees to where they ought to be considering the demand on our city. And the same would hold true for the demand on new pipes in the ground to bring in fresh water and dispose of the stuff that you flush down the toilet. Now, at the last meeting, a discussion could have started because BSU was in here at that meeting. They were making a presentation, it would have been an ideal opportunity to begin the conversation. Now we're two weeks behind that meeting and we're talking about, thankfully, inviting them at last to appear in front of the council to come in and do whatever it is they, they wish to present to you folks with respect to this impact slash ANC fee structure. And we should also get to the bottom of what is the real, the true cost of producing the gray water that is subsequently sold to RCS, Resource Conservation Systems, and then sold to the end user, no pun intended, in the city. We've been waiting for many years for that number and we've never gotten it. Now, they've set their rates for the sale of the water to RCS at what we believe are way below what would be an appropriate market price. We think that the, the benchmarks that they're using for it are not up to snuff themselves. Collier County is going through motions now with respect to what they're doing in the county and in the city with their irrigation water. And Lee County, as I mentioned in the last meeting, they're people that until recently and perhaps still, pay nothing for irrigation water. So if we're going to use that as the barometer to come to an average between the price of Collier and Lee County, I mean, where's that getting us when the, when one of the counties is virtually giving the water away for zip? So I, I hope that you will have that meeting ASAP. I hope it will be public, I hope the public can join the dialogue or debate, and I think it's important that we move forward ASAP with it. It's long overdue. And I hope that the city, by the way, will, I'll hold this for public comment. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Mr. Mayor?
Seeing, seeing none, we'll close public comment. Yes, Steve?
Can I just make a comment?
Yeah, sure.
Obviously, this is, BSU being a member-owned utility than a co-op, some of these questions ought to be more properly given at a BSU board of directors meeting before they get to council. I mean, we don't have control over what they do, the rates and tariffs and accept as a, as a final, a final decision, but they're the ones who are going to set the rates initially on the ANC fees and I would, you know, it's a suggestion to council members or public, you should attend a BSU board meeting and bring these up. That's really where that decision's going to be made first.
Okay.
I mean, we're, we're the last in this chain of decision-making.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, counsel, what's your pleasure when it comes to this particular ordinance, the comprehensive plan?
May, Mary?
I, yes.
I just want to respond to Mr. Pure that I've looked at the.
Are you sure?
I do, if you don't mind.
Okay, go ahead.
On pages 21 and 22, the goals, objectives, and policies do address his concerns. It does say that council shall encourage privately operated potable water utilities, so that would be BSU, to adopt a conservation rate structure for users in their respective service areas. So I mean, there is a structure in place, he might not agree with this structure, but there's a structure in place, and he would have that as his segue if he thought there was a rate structure that's inappropriate, should there, you know, if he timely, you know, did a court action, he has a segue on the basis of that. That would be his call. Also, policy 2.2.1 also talks about, and that was where council member Gibson, I'm sorry, I got focused on impact fees, is, I get very much into semantics, but does talk about new residential projects. City shall look at the use of reclaimed water for irrigation purposes and when deemed practical and feasible, will require the project to hook into the franchise utilities irrigation water system, the reclaimed water, in accordance with terms of the existing service availability policy. So it does call for it.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Okay, so far as this, making this comprehensive plan amendment, any other questions or comments or would you like to go forward? Yes?
Excuse me, Ben. Good evening, everybody. Last, the last meeting that, that this came up with, Mr. Masters made the, or presented us with the document, I thought at that time that it was appropriate for this council to entertain dialogue with BSU on the matter at hand, and of course, the vote was five to two. I did not do that with any, other than for the, for the people that live in the city of Benita Springs and that are customers of BSU, but it was an idea that we were bringing everybody to the table to discuss something that was possibly, could be improved upon in looking out for the people living in Benita Springs, but the vote was five to two. So now we're going to go back and we're going to have the BSU come again. We were actually going to save some time, if it had been at least four votes, we would have had an opportunity to begin the process, whatever way it works out, and that didn't happen. Thank you.
Okay, counsel, what's your pleasure?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to adopt the ordinance and transmit.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt the ordinance and transmit the comprehensive plan amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Okay, Audrey, do you have anything else for us?
I'm not at this time, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, public comment on any city item. Anyone wishing to speak at this time, please come forward.
Good afternoon, Albayer Community Ministries. Coincidentally, Councilman McIntosh happened to have mentioned that the public might consider going to the board of director meetings at BSU to more specifically address specific items. When I attempted that, I was banned from BSU after I went in front of the board requesting, as I told you during the last meeting, the final, the permitting information associated with two properties of my interest, 3616 Macomb Lane, 3646 Macomb Lane. At the time, an investor was considering purchasing 3646 Macomb Lane. At that point, I asked for the permitting information. I did not get the permitting information, which is why I came in front of council and asked management and government that, given that they're not providing to me public information that should be readily accessible, and that I received a letter from attorney Don Thompson basically stonewalling me, I asked you that you kindly favor me with requesting such permitting information on my behalf, which I'm here to request whether you've procured it and if you have, if you would favor me with the permitting associated with those two properties. It turned out that one of the properties has been recently found to have been on septic despite the fact that the sewer disposal charges had been charged for whatever amount of years it's been since Roaheli Plumbing moved to install such pipes. In the case of 3616, they're non-conforming, they don't meet the construction code relative to installation of pipes. And that's why I'm interested in it, because that property's mine, so I need to be made hold, hole. I'd like for a service warranty order to be put out by the general contractor in the project, which was BSU, so that Roaheli Plumbing comes back and bring it up to code. As far as the property adjacent, abutting mine, which I intended to manage, and I intended to broker its purchase on behalf of my investor who owns two other homes on my street, and it turned out that those pipes were never installed, it was still on septic. Why can I not get from any of you all the merited support hereof as far as procuring the subject permits? May I have an answer? Mayor?
We, I, if you really want an answer from me, what it's, what you've described sounds like a civil matter for the civil courts, that's what it sounds like to me, but I'm not an attorney, neither do I portray one. But I think, again, if they won't give you the information that you've requested from them, then I think that you should avail yourself of the court system. I don't think it's anything that we can cause them to give you, but that's, that's my opinion and that, I think that that's, that's the actual fact of the matter.
I'll react to your opinion during the next opportunity, given that this is flashing.
Thank you very much, sir.
You're very welcome.
Anyone else this, this time? Please come forward.
Mr. Mayor, for the record, Kathy McGrath. Am I correct, I can speak on any subject?
Any city, city matter, yes.
Oh, no, then I'll wait till the last one because this is, this is something personal. This is something about being aware of National Melanoma Month and so.
Oh, yes, you can do that.
May I do that?
Sure, sure, sure.
Thank you. I just, I, well, of course, I've always found out that the best way to get any word out around the city is to be here at city council meetings. And I just became aware that May is National. And I just became aware that May is National Melanoma Awareness Month. And as most everyone already knows, this is very personally, because I was diagnosed three months ago with a malignant melanoma in the center of my forehead. And I'm very grateful to tell you that it was removed, and nine lymph nodes were removed, and everything is clear. So I'm grateful for that. But I will have to be checked, and I'm just telling everyone, listen to what they tell you. You hear it all the time. Melanoma is not like your normal skin cancer. It can get in your lymph nodes and go throughout your own whole body if it's not taken care of. So do as they say. Check. Have people look at you. Go to your dermatologist, because it'll make all the difference. Thanks for letting me tell you.
And thank you, and we're so glad that you're on the minute.
Thank you.
Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Thank you for that advice, and I'm glad you're doing. Just to pick it up, Audrey, I'm not sure, did you agree with Mr. Pure or disagree with what you said earlier?
Go ahead, Ron.
I think you agreed. I'm in shock. This gives me shivers. Look, let's, huh?
No, that's, that's it, that's just focus. Go ahead, Ron.
You know, we've been to several franchise meetings over at BSU, Steve, and, and we've been welcomed, as they would be if they knocked on the door of the helm, and we'd let them in. I'd let them in and sit down and chat. But I got to tell you something about their meetings. They're, they're peculiar when you compare them to your meeting, for example. They don't tape-record their meetings, no audio, no video. They then, soon after they begin their meeting, they adjourn it and go into a roundtable discussion. And I understand that. Some of the stuff is proprietary, and they're in bidding process occasionally with some companies, and they've got to do that to keep it competitive. But still, much is needed from that company. And if, and if in fact, you guys are serious this time, you can remedy a lot of the such stuff that you've overlooked in the past, particularly at the last franchise renewal. We had about 10 issues on the table, and I don't think we typically come up with ideas that aren't prudent or well-thought-out. In fact, I'll say again today what I said two weeks ago. It's fortunate for us all that they picked, they, BSU picked up on some of our thinking four years ago when they were looking for a rate increase and didn't get it. First-ever time that they didn't get it from you folks on the council. We were thankful for that, and we continue to be, because they've, they've stopped raising their, their rates of the past three or four years. And there's still certainly no need for it this year. But I hope we can take advantage of the fact that they are there to serve, they are a monopoly, they're franchised by the city. Lee County, I believe, still has some oversight power with respect to the company, although I understand that they, the company, BSU, has relinquished some of it to the city, or the, forgive me, the county has relinquished some of their oversight to the city. But most importantly, their franchise agreement is reopenable. You do have to have both parties agree to it, but I can't imagine why BSU would not want to, if you wish to reopen the franchise, to make those adjustments that we've spoken of so frequently over the past six, eight, or 10 years, then it'd be a bad PR move for BSU to back down if you were to come up with that concept. I wish you all well in your endeavor, and I hope you'll adopt those things that Jerry and Dave and Jude and, and so many others have brought to your attention over the years. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and go on to the city attorneys' report. Audrey, what do you have for us?
Thank you. Before we start on the agenda, I did have in the errata, I have three requests for outside assistance. The first request is pretty simple. We use Tom Franchino as a hearing examiner. At the last code enforcement meeting, he advised that he had a conflict on a particular case, I believe it was AMCO transmissions, I'm not sure. We do need to have an alternate hearing examiner, and we have not had an alternate hearing examiner in probably 10 years. So I would like to just retain somebody for the similar price that we pay Mr. Franchino for the one case. I don't anticipate it more than one hour of time.
Counsel?
Move to approve.
Motion approved, the second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longkurt?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longkurt?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
And with that particular issue, everyone needs to be very careful, please, all our people?
Yes.
All right?
Yes.
All right, go ahead.
The next one is, again, asking to utilize Rotso and Andrus. We retained them during the referendum process, mostly because I was dealing with some county issues, that's a nice way to put it, and at this time, because we're doing some annexation, and there's also the Village of Astero, at this time, I would like council's permission to continue utilizing them just to research and also brief council on potential remedies to preserve our rights should, as to annexed properties within the referendum area. The only issue's the referendum area. This one I, I put on, again, it was kind of time-critical, but it is something I would like to brief council members, not out here, but, and also to allow Rotso and Andrus to do the research, get paid for it, and also brief you.
Thank you very much. Counsel?
Just a question.
Sure.
You're putting them into play prior to the Village of Astero incorporation vote, or?
That's correct. It's possibly that the type of lawsuit would require an earlier proceeding, and that's something that we'd want to brief council members.
That's fine, just wanted to make sure. Okay, I'll move to approve.
There's motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longkurt?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay, now.
That's the regular agenda stuff, and thank you, council. The next is request to advertise an ordinance that would amend three of the chapters, development standards, zoning, and sign ordinance, to create design standards specific to large-scale retail facilities. You have received some correspondence, and you've also received the response that I sent to Ms. Montgomery, same client, and that's Benita Exchange, and I'll talk about that later if necessary. At this time, I'd like to introduce Alexis Crespo to provide a presentation as to this issue.
Hey. Good evening. For the record, Alexis Crespo with Waltrip Engineering, representing staff. It's a pleasure to be back before you this evening, working on, on these amendments. I have prepared a brief PowerPoint presentation. Tonight's presentation was intended to be a high-level overview. This is permission to advertise, and the document attached to your green sheet is very much a working version of the draft ordinance, so we, we are anticipating changes through the LPA review and first and second reading, of course. So the intent tonight was just to walk you through the elements, discuss the issues we're looking to address through the amendments, and set forth a timeline for you. Oh, good, there you go. So, again, the presentation outlined, really, and another component of this is there has been some change on council since we were given the initial direction in January of 2014 to move forward with enhanced design standards for big-box uses. And when I say big box, it's interchangeable with our term large-scale retail establishment, and our current working definition of that is a standalone retail use exceeding 40,000 square feet in size, or a shopping center where the combined square footage is exceeding 100,000 square feet in size. So to be very clear, this is not intended to apply to your mom-and-pop-type retail. Even your large Walgreens, CVSs would not hit this threshold. So this is really intended for your national chains of big boxes, the Costcos, the Targets, Walmart, et cetera. So first, we wanted to just walk through some of the big-box design issues, issues that come along with these large-scale developments due to their massing scale, trip generation, auto-dependence, et cetera, and how we can create design alternatives to address those to ensure that the city of Benita Springs, as big-box redevelops and new big-box comes in, they have the highest level of design possible and really have those developments integrate with the local character and with what's Benita Springs is looking to achieve through their other various design standards. So one of the main issues when you're looking at a big-box store, pretty common, is there's a very large parking lot to accommodate the square footage. When you have these 100,000-square-foot buildings, hundreds of parking spaces are required. And historically, the, the typical suburban format has been to put all those parking spaces in front of the building with a very clear view of those parking spaces from the adjacent arterial corridor, which really detracts from the view shed in those areas. So what we'd be looking to do through these amendments is look at alternatives to break up that sea of parking effect through liner buildings, accessory buildings, placement of principal structures, internal landscaping, accessways, things that can break up that parking effect and create a better view shed from your major corridors. Certainly, these will be located on US 41 Benita Beach Road and those major gateways into the city. Another key component when looking at big-box is architectural design quality. It's called big box for a reason, because they're usually big boxes. And so as land development codes have evolved over time, Benita Springs is not the first to look at establishing big-box design standards. And you can find wonderful examples from across the nation where big-box have templates and prototypes for different areas to really meet the local character and provide those additional architectural standards that address what the community is trying to achieve. So they've done it in other areas, and through land development code amendments, you can encourage them to do so and provide that menu of options for those developers as they come into the city of Benita. And Mr. Vincent has been assisting with that component of the land development code amendments due to his expertise in that area. Another key component is signage. Signage and visibility are very important for these, again, auto-dependent type of uses. Often, they're in multi-complex centers, so proliferation of signage is also an issue with big-box. We want to look at balancing their need for visibility, but also with an attractive sign that speaks to the relationship with your arterial corridors. Access, also a major issue in, in the historical layout of some of these developments. Again, auto-oriented, a lot of the older big-box developments you see haven't given a lot of attention to how pedestrians can move throughout the development, how the pedestrian can either get into the development from the adjacent roadway, and how they can move around, move around safely once they're in the parking lot. So looking at, at ways of speaking to that pedestrian safety component within the big-box centers. And the culmination of all those is the impact on your view shed, the impact on your major corridors. When you marry quality architectural design, site design that provides screening and buffering from the road, when you provide the pedestrian access, and marry these components, you're going to have a much better result from your major corridors and a more pleasing built environment that emulates what the city of Benita Springs is trying to achieve through their local character. So we have a couple of, of pictures here to show kind of what has been done in the past, what the common issues are. This is your common sea of parking effect, where the building is pushed way to the back of the site, and really, what you see from the road is, is the sea of parking areas. So what can we do differently, or what incentives can we put in the land development code to encourage alternative design standards? This is an example from Fort Myers that you may be familiar with. This wouldn't necessarily work everywhere in Benita Springs. We're not certainly bringing forward LDC amendments that would require something like this, but this is a way where the building is located differently on the site. It's located towards the frontage, and it creates a much more pleasing view shed compared to the view of the parking lot. And here's a more suburban example that could potentially be implemented, where there's liner buildings that create a gateway into the big-box development, and again, in, in efforts to screen the parking area and create a more pleasing view shed from the surrounding Architecture, this is kind of your standard, basic, big-box look of store, and we know that they've worked hard to develop alternatives over the years, and I use this as an example. I think this is from Naples to show something with certainly a higher level of architectural interest. They've got different textures, different height variations, and so we're, we're working on creating a flexible menu of options that would result in this higher level of architectural detail in the building, so that we're not getting the, the rectangular box look that has been commonly used in the past. Signage, this is an example of your typical pylon-type sign. It's large, it's getting the job done of providing visibility for the big box, but there's not a lot of architectural detail or aesthetic value to this type of signage. And so then we look at the same company who's experimented with different type of signage, this being a monument sign, again, different textures, and the lower height of the sign also adds to the visual appeal of it. We mentioned the importance of integrating pedestrian access and circulation into these developments through the land development code amendments.
I have to stop you for a second. That's a great idea. You see, I mean, out of all the things you've said, every time you walk through a parking lot, you're walking in a road. So look at that. How simple is that?
There you go. And, and, and this is actually the bad example, because-
No kidding? I'm not, well, well, great.
Wait till you see the good one.
I mean, right?
This is certainly a step in the right direction. There is, there is a pedestrian path.
Then I withdraw everything I said. Continue.
The path is there. There, there is the, the way for the pedestrian to get to the front of the store. However, it's not very well-defined, and there's no curb stops that kind of create a nice safety barrier between the cars and the pedestrian walkway. So here's a nice example where brick pavers are used to really make the pedestrian walkways pop and make that known as the, the pedestrian area. And then also, you can see along the walkway, there's the use of plantings, canopy trees to really define that area and create a higher level of safety.
Yeah, I, I can't think of a place in Benita Springs right now that has a place between the cars where you can walk right offhand. So anyway.
So both of these would be good.
Yeah, but any of those, yeah, what are those?
All right. Okay, so those were the kind of high-level items that we're going to be bringing forward to you in the coming ordinance. Again, specific to large-scale retail establishments, this is, again, building on direction we received from council in January. You're going to be seeing amendments to several chapters of your code, because this doesn't just deal with zoning, certainly has a, a large component to deal with architecture and development standards in Chapter 3, signage, and staff is still working on whether we'll be amending Chapter 9 or not. But it's going to be multiple areas of your code that will need to be addressed through this process. And so what we're looking to achieve is, you know, first and foremost, a process to ensure city council review of these types of developments, because there's only so many locations where they can go in your city, and once they're there, they're there, and providing that public forum for your review is certainly something we're looking to achieve through this process. Also, establish site design and development standards, as was mentioned, enhance landscaping standards for those large parking lot areas that certainly have to occur to accommodate the use, architectural standards- Again, specific to large-scale retail establishments, this is, again, building on direction we received from council in January. You're going to be seeing amendments to several chapters of your code, because this doesn't just deal with zoning, certainly has a large component to deal with architecture and development standards in Chapter 3, signage, and staff is still working on whether we'll be amending Chapter 9 or not. But it's going to be multiple areas of your code that will need to be addressed through this process. And so what we're looking to achieve is, you know, first and foremost, a process to ensure city council review of these types of developments, because there's only so many locations where they can go in your city, and once they're there, they're there. And providing that public forum for your review is certainly something we're looking to achieve through this process. Also, establish site design and development standards, as was mentioned, enhance landscaping standards for those large parking lot areas that certainly have to occur to accommodate the use, architectural standards, and signage. And so, moving forward, we're here tonight for permission to advertise to gain additional council input. We are scheduled to go to your local planning agency next week, gather input there through the process, and then come back for our first reading on May 21st with the second reading on June 4th.
Okay. Good. Well done.
Thank you.
Counsel, you have any questions, comments? Yes, Pete?
Does the term "enhanced standards," does that have any legal definition or industry definition, or would that be up to us to define what an enhanced standard is?
Enhanced, from my perspective, enhanced means you have existing, some minimal regulations in Chapter 3 regarding large-scale retail, and so enhanced would mean additional standards, additional supplementary regulations.
Understood. Is that, does that have an existing definition, or is that up to us to give definition to what enhanced means?
I defer to Audrey on legal.
It's not a legal definition. I mean, the word enhanced is used many different ways. I believe that as a planner, you can determine what is the degree of enhance as opposed to core essentials for development. I mean, I think that's probably a better term to use, is usually when you look at core, you're looking at building code requirements. What's the minimum to allow a building to be erected? And in this situation, the development standards, the zoning, the sign ordinance changes are changes to enhance the experience when somebody is living here, which is perfectly fine under your police powers to do for aesthetic purposes.
There's no legal definition, it's just English.
It is.
There you go.
And probably through this process, we will get there, to an enhanced standard.
Correct.
Carl? Well, if I might, Mr. Mayor, I think it's a great question, and again, we believe the direction from council is, we don't want to be just good, we want to be great, because as Alexis said, and it's very, very true, that once these things are constructed, they are there a long time. These are not temporary uses, these are not temporary structures. They'll be there for decades, likely. So, we want to be in a situation where we don't get surprised that there are unintended consequences from the codes we currently have. We just want to ensure right now that we have enhanced standards, which I believe will be finally determined by the city council, based upon the codes that we would hope that you would consider and finally adopt. So I think really, you will end up adopting those and actually, by definition, create that enhanced.
Sure. Sure, and I guess, just to kick the can a little bit further, do we need to add the word "enhanced" on the third line to create enhanced design standards?
On what document?
Talking about in the title?
On the permission to advertise?
Right.
So it's like amending, it's like enhancing, or?
To create enhanced.
Design standards, as it's currently written. Should we put "to create enhanced design standards"?
It's in the title block, and probably also in the code. See that, third line?
Well, my opinion on that is that not all the standards that you create in this will be enhanced design standards. Some of them, I could possibly see that some of the things that you're requiring them to do aren't appropriate anymore, and so they wouldn't be considered enhanced. So I think you have to be careful with the language of it, because, you know, you're creating a new set of standards, but not all of them will be enhanced standards. So I don't know. I think we're, anyway, but it really doesn't matter that much.
Well, I agree with Councilmember Simmons. I think we're going to get there. Now, and I do want to reiterate that this is the first step, permission to advertise and to begin the process that was laid out there. And we also are encouraging public input. You are already receiving some concerns and suggestions for improvements to the code. We welcome those, but we also want to publicly acknowledge that the council has been pretty strict in advising staff what your expectations are. And so, with Alexis's help and with community development's help and Audrey's, that we have produced a document here that is significantly above, generally speaking, what we have in the code now, and will produce a good product, right? However, there may be opportunities for improvement even on what's been presented to you, and we certainly, staff-wise, look forward to public input, and then we'll see what the product ends up as we go through the process.
All right. Yeah, thanks, Pete. Mike?
Yeah, I have a couple issues. The first being the 10% must be provided to community space. That's an awful lot of land. You know, somebody paid for that 100% of that land, and you're asking them to give up 10% for things like a gazebo, a seating area that's not being used for a restaurant. I just think it's encouraging loitering, and 10% just, you know, it's kind of a large amount to set aside for community space, especially going to a Sam's Club or Target. I'm not really looking for a place to sit down, I'm going in to shop.
Right. I'll just add to, just to clarify, because that was something that obviously came up from some of the stakeholder input, the 10% is part of the city's already required 35% open space. So 35% of these sites have to be open space, and of that, the 10% is, we're proposing would be a usable space for employees, potentially patrons, et cetera, but it's not in addition to that open space requirement. So it's not extra land that wouldn't already have to be set aside and not developed.
Is open space water retention areas, or like the islands and the parking lots, things like that?
A portion of your stormwater lakes can count towards your open space, and I believe the landscape islands can, yes.
Yeah, well, I just don't see, you know, setting that much aside for community space. So like I said, going to big-box stores, you're not looking for a playground, or it's one thing, you go to Coconut Point, you know, it's a big area, you're walking around, you may have kids, it's nice to have the little play area there, but Sam's Club, Target, I don't really see that. Maybe the clock tower or the water fountain might, you know, aesthetically be pleasing. But then, also, moving the buildings 25 foot off the road, I know you mentioned it, you see a sea of parking as you go down the road, but a sea of parking with nicely landscaped parking lots, to me, looks a lot better than having buildings right along the road. You have more of a canyonization feeling driving down the road. And then also, in the future, if the roads need to be widened, you're knocking down buildings instead of just taking over part of a parking lot.
Right.
So, to me, it's not really aesthetically pleasing seeing buildings right along the road. And plus, larger buildings are going to have multiple docks in the back for loading and unloading. Something like that's better towards the back of the building. You can have a fence or a wall protecting that area where people wouldn't normally see it. You bring that out to the front, you're either going to, well, you wouldn't see it along the road because it wouldn't be there, but then it has to be on the side that people, customers are going to be going to.
I think what might be helpful for Mike and the rest of us when it comes to these things, because it is really important what he's talking about, is to, or to have some visuals as you start making these proposals and saying, "Council, well, if there are places within the city that this does make sense, you know, to have this out and to have that feeling, and there are, maybe there are some places where it doesn't make sense to have that happen." So maybe there needs to be some flexibility in there insofar as the design. You can either do this or that. So, I would agree, under certain circumstances there with what Mike's saying, but in some circumstances, it may be, it may be the best thing to happen, is to have that front. I can think of a couple of places there. I mean, right there off of New 41 where Outback Steakhouse and everything, that's the way their design was, their buildings are out to the front, the parking is behind it. Seems to work okay there, but...
There's a lot of spacing in between the buildings. If you're looking to build a large, you know, over 40,000-square-foot building, you know, that's going to be a huge building on the road.
And when we get to that, we will absolutely provide the illustrations and exhibits so it's clear, and there's multiple development options, and we're not proposing that the big-box store would have to be 25 foot off the front property line. It could be a scenario where you have a couple of out parcels, and the big box could be at the rear of the site, so we'll absolutely address that and show the flexibility we're working into the ordinance to...
So that's pretty common.
Not trying to design anyone's site.
That's a pretty common design, too, that works pretty good, is to have out parcels up in the front there where they like to be, and then have the parking in between the two, so, yeah. All right. Well, good, good. As this evolves along, where we can have those discussions a little further and in-depth, I suppose, eh?
Yes.
Right? Good. Anything else? What else you got, Mike?
I'm good.
Janet?
Thank you. Given that we had our presentation tonight to the Bicycle Safety Committee and their commitment, the city's commitment to bicycle safety, that we are looking at this as a kind of a thought process that when the big-box stores are coming in and they're having to do their bicycle and pedestrian walkways, that there is a thought process about maybe connecting to the front, the frontage, say, along the 41, and making sure that the sidewalks are wide enough to be dual-purpose, because that's what we're finding we're going to with a lot of our streets, is that is the sidewalk will be large enough for our sidewalk riders, bicycle riders and our pedestrians. So I wanted to make sure that that was taken into consideration, because I did see that you have in here that the sidewalks should be a minimum of eight feet when they're close to the building, but there's no discussion as to how that interlinks with, say, other sidewalks. So I'd like to see that. And the bike racks, that's great. I think it's fantastic that there is a trigger of 100 required parking spaces. Do these big-box stores obviously have, usually, trigger more than 100 so that we do get the bike rack, no matter what? And I guess my question would be, if it is a, say, 99 parking spaces, does that mean there's no bike rack at all to happen? So I think that there should be a bike rack no matter what.
I absolutely agree, and we'll look at that wording to make sure.
Thank you. And, let's see. When we go to buffering, type C perimeter buffer, when we talk about if one of these stores is going to be close to a residential area, I think that it should be, at any cost, the best buffer, highest buffer, whether it's wall landscaping, a conjunction of both. But when we're talking about buffering people's homes and bedrooms, I think we've got to do the best job we can to take care of our residents with that. And, sorry. On our architectural styles and designs, we have wood Bahamas shutters. I love Bahamas shutters, but do they have to be just wood? Can they be aluminum? Can they be metal? Do they have to be made from wood? So I didn't know if that could be something that it's just, you're saying that style, but it can be made from a variety of...
Yeah, that makes sense.
Of materials. And, I think that was one more. We get into the hours for deliveries, and I think, again, with that, that that needs to be addressed per application and location, because if we are close to where people live, those hours might need to be, we might need to be a little bit more flexible when we're talking about delivery trucks or garbage trucks coming in and out of a large-box store. You know, they're going to be getting lots of deliveries, so we want to make sure that our residents are protected. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Anyone else before you send us to first reading? Counsel, would you like to send us to the first reading?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? Alexis, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Longcart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay. Item B.
Thank you. This is another ordinance. This is to amend Land Development Code, Chapter 4, to limit certain uses on US 41, to require them to be developed by planning, planned development or special exception. This ordinance will be scheduled, if council approves, on May 21st for the first reading and June 4th for the second reading, with LPA reviewing on May 15th. City council adopted on April 16th a resolution to declare a zoning, 90, a zoning in progress for 90 days for certain uses on US 41. It was not a moratorium prohibiting uses. It just said that you needed to go for it if you had certain uses, and the list is on page two of the green sheet, in those particular uses, you needed to either have a special exception or a planned development. City staff has now made those amendments, and it's explained in the green sheet, to the use table within the zoning ordinance. This is prong one. There will be another ordinance, it was not ready yet, and the other ordinance would be modification to the sign code. Originally, I thought it was going to be something where staff was going to make a recommendation to revise the sign code of having a corridor very similar to Benita Beach Road corridor. Staff felt that there is reason to change it, instead of going with a special corridor for US 41, to do full changes to the sign ordinance, recognizing that at that time we'll have a lot of non-conforming type signs that will be there, but it'll prevent future signs not being appropriately sized and placed. It'll be a time-place-neutral regulation for future signs, and there'll be some non-conforming provisions to address all the different signs that will be modified as a result of that change. That's not in this ordinance, that's in another ordinance that will be coming once it's read.
Okay. Good. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Would you like to send this to the first reading? I think it's important on these things to go ahead and get them out there so that the development community, the property owners and everybody can go ahead and get a good reading of this and start participating at that level, so what would you like to do? Would you like to send it out there and get them started? Go ahead, Mike.
Is this the one that had tattoo parlors listed previously? Because I don't see it listed anymore.
No, I believe tattoo par, let me just check real quick here on the code. Tattoo parlors are...
What type of services? Help me. John?
It wouldn't read as tattoo, it probably is a specialty retail, I don't think it's...
I just mainly wanted to make sure it was the same one, because that's what stood out the last time I read it.
But the thing is, it might be a specialty retail, and I'm not sure specialty retail is...
But the main question, though, is we're not prohibiting these, we're just extra step for them to go through, too.
Correct.
That's correct.
And I'm not looking, I'm not seeing where tattoo parlors are...
That's all right. He was just trying to figure out if it's the same one he was talking about last time. But yeah, you're right, Mike, and what they, what we'll do is that if they want to have that use, instead of it being vested, they'll bring it before staff and before council, and that way they can be sure that it's commensurate with, you know, what's going on there. So, anyway, there you have it. Counsel, anything else? Any questions? What would you like to do? What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion to send to first reading? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Longcart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye. Okay, item C.
Hi. Item C is a supplemental ordinance to the special event permit, and this would be requiring an ordinance, and also a new ordinance, for an outdoor flea market operating permit. If city council approves, it'll be scheduled for public hearings on May 21st and June 4th. It doesn't go to the LPA, it's not a land use regulation, so it's not statutorily required to go there, but it would regulate outdoor flea markets to certain timeframes. Outdoor flea markets do compete with our indoor flea markets, they also are not to be confused with farmer markets. So there's different things. These are usually the things that you end up having for a special event permit that you end up getting arguments on. So this would limit it to two, I believe, two per year, and would be set up that you'd be able to issue two per year, two road segments, so you would be limiting where you could place them. And it would have list of prohibited items, list of food regulations, what hours of operation, again, time-place-neutral. It does compete with other businesses, so it is trying to keep it a very limited use within the city.
Okay. Any questions? Mike?
Does this apply to the Lions Club market?
Absolutely.
So they would only be allowed to have it twice a year, instead of every...
No, no, no. They could have it once per week, but they could be one of the permits issued.
Okay, one of the two allowable.
Correct.
Yep, there you go.
And this is not addressing what they have on their property for, you know, their store and their, this is what they have out on US, right, US 41.
And so this is going to help staff get a better handle, so far as the other ancillary little things that go on there, so they don't have to do it every special events permit, they don't have to go through it every time. There's a set of rules and regulations for it.
Right. It's still a special event permit, but it's auxiliary requirements to a special event permit. Because it's not so special if you do it every day.
So it's more standardized approach.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions, comments? Would you like to send us to first reading?
Second.
Okay, we have, send us to permission to advertise and ordinance, and roll call, please.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Longcart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Okay. Audrey, do you have anything else?
Not at this time, sir.
Okay. And we are up to the city manager's report. Carl, do you have anything for us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I personally don't, however, John's got a couple of updates he wants to provide council.
Just, sorry about that. Two very brief updates. Jane has tried to reach out to council about setting up one-on-one meetings with the lib, the county's library consultant. If you haven't gotten back to Jane about whether or not you want to have those meetings, please do. Soon as we have a full roster and some more information from the consultants, we'll be actually setting up the particular days and times for those meetings. Probably June third or fourth, I think, is the dates that they're looking at right now. Part of that outreach is also going to be the consultant meeting with various community groups, including the Friendsville Library, the former Library Task Force members and others as they go forward to try to get a pulse of what exactly this new facility should be. So again, if you haven't gotten back to Jane about whether or not you want to have those one-on-ones, please do. Second brief update is on the beach renourishment project. The agreement between the Board of County Commissioners and their contractor is scheduled now to go in front of the Board of County Commissioners at their meeting on May twentieth. The pre-construction meeting with the contractor is set for the first week in June. And we can expect to see sand starting to get up on the beach probably by the first week in July. We're very pleased with the contractor that they finally selected. We think that they're going to be bringing the right kind of resources to the project so that we don't have to go through some of the anxiety that we anticipated between whether or not the Lover's Key component or the Benita Beach component would be going forward. Sounds like they might be able to actually do both simultaneously. So we'll keep you posted on that, but very good news on both of those projects moving forward with the county.
Okay. Good. Thank you very much. Anything else, Carl? Okay. And now we are mayor and council member items, and this is the discussion concerning city council committee assignments. Let's see. Mike, did you have a couple there that you wanted to, were interested in?
Yeah, after looking it over, there was a few on to go ahead and take over. I heard that
Let's see. There's a few highlighted here.
Yeah, the RPC.
The Regional Planning Council? Would you be interested in that one?
Yeah, sure.
Good. Excellent. And then there's the tourist development.
Tourist Development Council.
That one as well?
The bays and rivers, I was going to give to Peter in exchange for the Charlotte Harbor.
Oh, okay. All right. Is that, Peter, you okay with that?
Great, absolutely.
All right. All right. And then Parks and Rec is highlighted, too. I thought that was, was, oh. Do we have anything for that?
I mean, unnecessary. It's a staff function, so.
It's a staff function, so that's not really, not really, yeah. All right. Well, is there anything else? Mike, did you saw there? Let me see. And staff, do you have anything that you thought was missing?
And I was just going to say, I'm willing to, if you see something on my list that you're interested in, please let me know.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
So under the Florida League of Cities, we do have Councilmember Simmons on that. There is a, there is a Southwest group, so they're a local version of the Florida League of Cities. So that's not specifically listed here that I could find, at least. We've made some assumption that perhaps Councilmember Simmons would simply cover that meeting, too. But we don't want to make that assumption, so.
Is that the group that meets in Fort Myers?
Yes, at the Veranda.
Oh. Okay, that's what I thought it was.
It's not on this list. Just wanted to figure out.
I always thought that that's what it was referring to. I thought that was what it was.
Those lunches, I just thought they were the same group.
Oh, well, there you go. There you go.
All right.
Problem solved.
Good. Thank you.
Is that something that would interest you?
Do they, the League of Cities, they allow an alternate or? Do they?
I think they do.
Martha and I were there.
It's, yeah, it's really kind of an informal group. I mean, they're not all that
I don't know if they are
strict about those kinds of things. I think you can have a member and an alternate if you'd like to do that.
Yeah, that way, that way, if one of you couldn't go and you could coordinate that.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Want to do that. That way we'd, that way we'd always have a representative there if they allow that. All right, good. Excellent.
Also, I thought Councilwoman Martin had mentioned the YMCA.
If you'd like to I've had my opportunity to be part of that board.
Everybody has to take a shot at that.
Wanted to take a shot at it.
Well, I know they're looking to do a
Really are. The school, yeah.
The school side, and I'd like to.
Yeah. Good. Excellent.
Awesome.
Anything else, Mike?
Well, the, one thing on the MPO. I was wondering if that's a seat that could be moved around, and I know you guys have been on it a while. Would it be appropriate to nominate somebody else to take one of the seats?
Yeah, this council can do whatever it would like to do when it came to that.
Well, I know Peter's been serving as the alternate, and I was wondering if he could step up and be if he wants to, of course.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Yep. I mean, if council, if you, if you want to go ahead and have, I guess, replace me as the
Well, Dr. McIntosh is the chairman.
He's the chairman.
So I guess it wouldn't be appropriate to replace him.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying you've done a bad job or anything, you know, done a great job.
Well, I get it.
But I mean, I just, I figured it'd be good to kind of change things up a little bit.
Well, if that's, if that's council's desire, you're welcome to do that. Yep. You're welcome to do that.
Well, personally, as chairman of the MPO, I prefer not to change somebody at this point in time. We're, we have a number of people who are moving in and out of different positions in elections, so this fall might be a more appropriate time to look at, to see what we've got going on.
Yeah, and to go ahead and hit the elephant in the face, despite this, this, what's been going on about the flyover and all this other stuff like this, okay? There is a great advantage to having somebody there with a great deal of seniority. Because if you've got, if you're debating with ten other people who don't know what they're talking about, you're at a pretty good advantage. And, and so, not that my cohorts don't know anything, but it takes a long time to figure out the acronyms, what's going on, what the past history is. And if, like I said, if council wants to go ahead and replace me, that's fine. But this isn't a one-issue deal. It's, I mean, there are a lot of different issues that come up on the MPO there that have to do with, and you've, and you've got to be able to promote an agenda. Sometimes that agenda was the wrong, this time, the council decided that that agenda wasn't appropriate. But, other than that.
Well, being as there is a learning curve and other people will be in that learning curve, wouldn't it be better for somebody else to be in the learning curve at the same time instead of everybody else having a leg up on
Sure.
a new person later?
Well, I might suggest that it's not inappropriate for Councilman Simmons to be there. He is the alternate, so, you know. And it's open to the public, so any council member who wants to go is free to go. So if you'd like to ride along with us anytime, we'd love to have you.
And if you want to take my alternate spot, by all means, you can, too. Seriously.
Yeah.
To get learning.
Yeah, I mean, whatever, whatever council wants to do. I mean, I have a lot of means to go to. I, I think I've been pretty effective on the MPO and can still be pretty effective on the MPO. However, if there's some dissatisfaction with that,
Well, I think, I think that if you, have you been to an MPO meeting?
Not yet.
I see. Well, you should go and get a sense about it. Because every mayor is serving on the MPO. And I think it'd be inappropriate to pull our mayor off at this point. But, as I say, you can come to a public meeting, ride along with us and see what goes on.
Well, would you like?
I'm going to offer Mike my alternate spot. I think I'd like to do that if you'd like to do that.
And, and if that happens, it would be great for you to be there at the meetings, Mike, when there is an MPO meeting, whether or not, whether or not the two voting members can be there. You should be there. Because you're right, it does take, it takes a while to figure out, you know, how the system works, how it doesn't work, and that type of thing. So, however, however, if this council
Well, let me finish.
If you get done with me, you just say so.
Well, let me finish your comment because it is important, Mike, as the alternate, you will be voting if one of us isn't there. So it's, it's critical that you understand what's going on, so please. We go up every month, and you're, I'd love to have you go with us.
Yep, and you will, you will get the call that, that, you know, more often than not, that, hey, I can't make it, Steve can't make it. Can, can you be there? You know, I mean, that happens, that happens quite a bit. You know, so you will be the one on the hot seat. And if you, and if you haven't been at the meetings, it's hard to say, ah, we've got a meeting coming up. What's, what's even on the agenda? I don't know what they've been talking about for the past couple of months there, so. All right? Do you accept the position?
I do.
All right, good. All right, thank you very much. Now, is there, is there anything else, Mike?
That plate looks pretty full, so.
Okay, good. Yeah, I think you've bitten off a lot there, but that's good. That's good. Anyone, anyone else?
Parks and Recreation, we were not doing anything there.
Yeah, Parks and Recreation, staff function. I thought we took, I thought we took that off there once before.
We'll, we'll make sure it's off now.
Yeah, okay. All right, anything else? We're all good?
Yeah, may I just, while we're still talking, Mike, the next meeting is January sixteen, January sixteenth. It's May sixteenth, Cape Coral. And I cannot be there. I've made the MPO, I've gotten the MPO notice, I can't be there because I'm going to my sister-in-law's retirement after thirty-six years of teaching. She's having a retirement party. That's been approved, so if you and the mayor are set, that'd be a great time for you to introduce yourself.
Okay.
I'll send a letter to the MPO.
What time is it normally?
Nine o'clock.
Aye.
Yep, Cape Coral. And if you, and if you would go ahead and send an email to Mike or to staff, and then staff can go ahead and remind Mike with the time date. And be sure that he gets a copy of the agenda.
I'll send a note to, remind me to send a note to Don Scott, the MPO folks, please.
Okay.
And Peter, thank you for your service on the
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Nice going. All right. All right, good deal. Let's go ahead and go to the next item, if that's okay with everyone. Approved new three-year contract with city manager. Okay, here we go. Let me get in the right place. All right, just as an overview of you, I think that Carl has spoken with all of y'all. And, but actually, the issues there were, you know, the length of contracts, still, you know, two thousand eleven to two thousand fourteen, remaining at three years was the proposal. These are all proposed. Severance pay, we had a escalating or de-escalating scale, a declining scale last time, which was six months severance when he started, four months to three months. What he's, what Carl and I had agreed on tentatively, again, this is just a tentative recommendation, would be the statutory limit, which is a little less than five months, which is less than that first, first year that he was here. The salary at, going from one fifty-two-five-hundred to one sixty-two-five-hundred would remain the same for three years. We feel as though, or I feel as though, that, and I think Carl would agree, that that's commensurate, that's more mid-range for for his position there. I think that in his workload, I think that that's, that's, that's right where it probably needs to be at this particular time. But that's good for the next three years, so there's no rego, no escalating scale. It stays that way. The health coverage, he wanted to point out that his spouse, his wife, spouse. It's your wife, isn't it? Spouse is weird. Anyway, she's coming off the insurance for seven, six thousand dollars. And he wanted to bring the deferred compensation from ten thousand dollars a year and go ahead and do it at the maximum allowable at seventeen-five. Other than that, there's been, there's been some cleanups on the contract, which had to do with him first coming on board there. And with that, counsel, if you have any questions or comments, or Carl or myself, or is our HR representative here? She is not. Well, it'll be Carl or myself answering the questions, if you have any questions or comments.
I'd like to comment.
Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
I would like to say this, that the job that you've done, Carl, since you've been here has been exemplary. Not only on the fin, on the financial side, but also the human side. And I have, without a doubt, do approve everything that's, that's, that's been asked for by Ben, who worked on it. And I look forward to working with you in the future also. Thank you.
Good deal. Good deal. Anyone else? Everyone good? Is there a motion?
Good job.
No, I'll make the motion.
Make the motion?
Sure.
Motion to approve the proposed changes to Carl's contract? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. And I just meant to make comment to Carl. Nice job. You have really added a new dimension here. Our Gary Price, great city manager as well. But with every new person that comes on, everybody has something different to, to, to offer. And, you know, you've been the right person at the right time, so it's been a pleasure to work with you. Hopefully get to work with you for two more years here. That would be great. Anyway, so we have motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Longcart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye, of course.
That was like Wheel of Fortune, aye, wasn't it? Give me an aye! Yes, I watched the Wheel of Fortune.
Everybody did.
So sad. All right, now, let's not, not everybody, Bill.
Not everybody.
Not everybody.
What's with that? Anyway.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I just want to thank council for the renewal of the contract under the new terms. It has been an absolute pleasure to be here. We've had lots of challenges along the way in the last three years. First off, it's hard to believe it's been three years, okay? But we've made some great accomplishments, as you saw on the list. Obviously, we have a wonderful, wonderful staff, best staff that I've ever worked with here, very, very dedicated people. And I'm very thankful that they're a part of our team to help serve our residents, so. And Brenda loves being here, too, by the way, so we're just glad to be here. Thanks so much for your support.
Where's she at? Why does she come? I know, I'm just kidding.
Is she working? I don't know. Probably home taking care of the dogs.
All right. She's same place my wife is, right? Top of the street. Why is your wife here? Okay, now, let's go on to the city attorney. I have to tell you, Audrey is, is the, I can tell you without a doubt, Audrey is the hardest city attorney, working city attorney ever, ever anyplace is, and I got to tell you, the, if I have one critique, it's that if you say the word ordinance, it's written in a half hour.
It's not.
And I mean, and that, sometimes that's a great thing. I mean, you are just prolific, and I have to say that, too. I mean, we can talk about different issues and different critiques. Audrey and I have had this client privilege here for a long time and, and relationship. It's been a pleasure. You are a superwoman. You actually are.
Thank you.
So, with that in mind, her contract, I think, was a little simpler in some regards. Still a three-year term, the compensation fixed again for the three years at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The severance, one week for every year of service. How many years is?
Fourteen years.
Fourteen years. Same as my marriage. That's weird.
Actually, you got married before the city and corporate, or before
That's right. That's right. My wife's not watching. Anyway, health coverage, the same as, health coverage, same as the regular employees and the deferred compensation. The city contributes five thousand dollars, with employee paying the remainder of the amount. And that's pretty much it. And that's just to show you that the mid-range for city attorneys is a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. We've been working for a little while to get, the last couple of times we negotiated a contract, to bring Audrey up to a point that we thought was commensurate with her, with her talents and her skill level and her level of experience, which is, I think, unmatched. So with that, any other comments or questions from, from council? Do you have anything?
Yes.
Yes, Bill.
I'll say the same, similar thing I said about the city manager. It's been a pleasure to work with you, Audrey, and trying to listen to all the people out there when it's easy to condemn, criticize, and complain about anything or everything. And I know how hard you work, and I know how dedicated you are, has been, as stated. And I look forward to working with you in the next two years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I was just going to say, good job, Audrey. If you can do an ordinance in 30 minutes, how long does it take you for a moratorium?
Probably 15 seconds.
Depends on the research required.
How long does it take to say no? Anyway, did anyone make a motion to approve the contract?
I'll make a motion, please.
Motion to approve the contract, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longkart?
Aye.
Okay, council, thank you very much and well done, both, both you guys. Well done. Now, who would like to start off, council member items? Steve, why don't you start off?
Yeah, just very briefly, thank you for those of you who helped with Charter School Government Day. We had a great time. 25 kids brought their civic class to life for them. They ran the city, did a pretty good job. And thank you very much for that. Happy Mother's Day, Connie. Happy Mother's Day, you've been a great mother.
Aw, thank you, thank you. Bill, I'm going to switch over to Bill. Bill, do you have anything for us?
Thank you, but everything is fine.
Okay, thank you very much. Janet?
Alrighty, a couple of things. First off, our community pool, swimming lessons are starting. It's that season where people are starting to think about swimming and get back into the water. So they will be starting soon, so they're $45 for eight lessons. And for more information, you can call the community pool at 947-1948. And then I just want to remind everyone that Monday, this coming up, May 12th, at 10:00 is the ribbon cutting ceremony for the dedication of columns Benita Trail. So that is a long time coming, and, you know, when you think of how long that vision has been in place and to finally see it this year come to fruition, and then to see all the folks that are using it, it's amazing. There's always somebody out walking the trail. So good job, everybody who pulled that together. It was just, it's pretty awesome for the city. And then, since Steve is not here, I will carry his torch for one second and say, remind everyone about the Memorial Day Service on Monday, May 26th, at 9:00 a.m. in Riverside Park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mike, what you got?
Well, I'd also like to say happy Mother's Day to my mom and my wife, and other than that, I'm good.
Thank you very much. Pete, what you got?
Sure. I'd like to congratulate, you know, Benita Springs, a resident of Benita Springs has never been a state representative or a state senator. Some few weeks back, we nominated Benita Springs resident for the United States Congress. So I'd like to say congratulations to Kirk Clausen. Looking forward to working and moving together with a Benita Springs resident, and happy Mother's Day to all.
Okay, and I'm going to take a pass. Thank you very much for everything that everybody's doing there and working hard. And again, the team that we put together through all this annexation stuff, boy, glad to see this coming to fruition. It was hard work on everybody's part, so. And council, thank you for all your support through that whole thing. Lot of stuff going on at the same time. Okay, approval in minutes.
Move to prove.
Motion to prove, second?
Second.
There's a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longkart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay, and now, public comment. Anyone wishing to speak at this time on any city matter, please come forward.
Albaire Community Ministries, in reaction to the mayor's recommendation to seek inordinately expensive, I'm sorry, inordinately expensive and time-consuming, consuming civil court system relief. I'd like to react in A, a taxpayer, and B, as you owner-member posture. And B, in an aggrieved civilian posture. From a taxpayer's perspective, it's not in my best interest for this matter to go through the mayor's recommended route as the BSU posture regarding this discrepancy is indeed conclusively non-compliant. Firstly, because permitting information must be readily released to any citizen promptly upon request. And secondly, because the grievances are indisputable. The proprietor of 3646 Macomb Lane, as only the Lord knows how many other comparables in our city, did pay during a decade for the sewer sewage disposal charges of reference and for the expensive installation that never took place, as his home was still on septic for all that time. And the expensive pipe installation on my property remains non-conforming. So since I'm indeed a member of both BSU and of my city, I'd have to proportionally cover the bill for the attorney charges that BSU and the city of Benita Springs would have to pay as the losing litigants. From an aggrieved civilian and community missionary perspective, I'd like to allude to the decency factor by sharing with you a prayer that I compose, that spells out my philosophy on how to live healthily from both an individual and a collective perspective. This is something I wrote to my kids the other day. Holy Spirit, illuminate me, always with what I should think, what I should say, how to say it, what I should restrain myself from saying, how to act, how to react towards disrespect attempts by prospective trespassers, how to conduct myself to honor God on behalf of all souls and of my sanctification, so that I can best cultivate the best possible present and future in my consequently increasingly gentle universe. If any civilian, especially an elected government council, becomes aware of a grievance to another civilian, civic and moral duty calls for attentive support, at the very least, during new campaigning, every one of you, including the today absent, promise to behold such civically questionable standards, to be present, i.e., to listen to valid concerns and act on them conscientiously. Once again, I attentively request that you please favor me with requesting the permitting information associated with 3616 Macomb Lane and 3646 Macomb Lane, given that I've been stonewalled by whom I've already addressed in your presence unsuccessfully. God bless you both, all.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Anyone else this time? Please come forward. Seeing now, oh, there you are. I couldn't see you. Seeing none, because there was somebody standing there. Come on forward.
Kathy McGrath, I just want to close by saying, first of all, to both Carl and Audrey, Benita's gain was Cape Coral's loss. And Audrey, I've known Audrey since she was Audrey Kaplan, for goodness sakes, with Lee County. And I was so happy when she was hired as, don't frown, Ben.
No, I was just, I didn't know that.
I was just going to talk about my marriage for a second.
I knew her before she was married even. I mean, of course, I've been around so long, like you. But anyway, I just wanted to close the meeting sort of with that very positive thing about, I mean, we're so fortunate about staff, but you are both winners, and we're winners for having you. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. Seeing none, thank you, everyone. Me, it's turn.